Mike, something worked.
I'd like to call the Special City Council and Planning Commission meeting too harder. First of all, thank you everyone for cooperating and being here tonight. I'll make it easy on you. Mr. Heisler and Mr. Sills, I think you have called. Everybody else looks to be present, Mr. Clark. Department heads were not told they had to be here. I know the Economic Development staff is here, and I appreciate that. Planning Commission, are we missing anybody? Jim? I don't have your group memorized.
Tony, Tony, Chenius and Arm Jacobs are not here. And I did hear from them about the movie, "Call My Own Person," that they might have seen it.
Okay, so you've got notes of that, right? Who's here? As far as the Planning Commission's attendance, you'll take care of that. I want to thank everybody for being here. This is very important, and I think you'll hopefully engage in some good dialogue here tonight. Before we get started, I'm going to ask everybody who would please stand and join me in the present business.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will note that our city attorney, Colin, is running a little bit late coming for another meeting, but he should still be here at some point. He should be on the meeting. I'm going to open public participation, but tonight's really engaged plan for a meeting of the Council and the Planning Commission. Does anybody from the public, the couple of members I see, have any questions before we start or any comment? Yes, sir?
Rick Brown, 125 U.C., Elaine, Shiloh, Illinois. I'm really glad to see this outfit is going to be doing the comprehensive plan. But what needs to be known, and what they need to know, is the absolute disaster that this administration and the previous administration did to the city of Belleville with the zoning ordinance and the old comprehensive plan. You know, it's no secret that I don't like what the city has done. They retroactively rezoned about eighty percent of the properties in the city illegally. They changed permitted uses in several categories illegally and didn't grandfather the existing uses. You know, and it's, I believe that my data that I have compiled will show that the city fathers did this to discriminate against African Americans. The data shows that. They continue that to this day, and this has to stop. Now, there are several different categories that this has been done. We all know that Belleville never had a black employee until the early 1990s, and that defies credibility. We also know that Sixty Minutes has been here three times. We had Driving While Black. We had the barricades up at Signal Hill to keep blacks from using St. Louis from coming into Belleville. You know, if this Kennedy Keith operation, if they, if they base the comprehensive plan on the existing zoning ordinance, that would be an error. It has to be based on the prior zoning ordinance before the illegal retroactive ordinances removing two-family and multifamily and commercial land uses from certain areas of the city. They have, they have to take into consideration what it was originally zoned, because those, those ordinances made a ton of property in the city non-conforming uses. And that's why we have all the vacant, hundreds and hundreds of vacant properties all over town. Thank you.
Is there anyone else this evening? Hearing that, I'm going to close public participation. We're going to get into purpose of tonight's meeting. And for that, I'm going to ask our Economic Development Director, Emily Foltz, to come forward and introduce our guest tonight and explain the procedures of how we're going to move forward here.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming to another meeting. I know we all know a lot of meetings, but this is especially important as we work on getting our city and move the city forward and continue to do so. So Gary Mitchell and Liz Probst are here from Kennedy Keith Collaborative. We've been doing a series of meetings over the last two days. This is the last meeting they're going to have in town here. And this is intended to be a workshop with both the Planning Commission and the City Council to talk about issues and needs and opportunities that our city faces. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you guys.
When I asked you for the last, people who have been invited to the last two-day meetings, you told me there would be more of linked meetings.
Yes.
So could you explain when that comes in?
So we are going to have more meetings at the neighborhood level, second or third week in September. We're working on scheduling those. And that will be the second round of meetings, and there'll be an online platform where people can participate, and many more opportunities.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Gary Mitchell once again, and Liz Probst. And we do have a few slides to get us started, but I can tell you that we intend to be here not more than about an hour, hour and a half at the most. We'll see how the discussion goes, but this is partly your workshop and discussion to drive. But we have some questions we want to put before you. So the slides are here to the right, or my right. And we just want to give you some background first before we put some discussion items before we do technology work.
Is that any better?
There we go. You know, we get, we're asked often where we do work. We actually do work around the country with all types of communities. Liz and I, for example, in the last year or so, we are wrapping up a comprehensive plan for Gillette, Wyoming, for example, a city of about thirty thousand, which is very much an energy town, boom and bust. They have come through the boom period, actually, and like everybody, have dealt with some of the recession of the last few years, but they are at a point of getting to that diversification of their economy where they can keep the momentum going beyond just energy. Another example is Carbondale, I mentioned when we were here about a month ago, nearby example, but a city dealing with some older neighborhoods, housing issues as well, and the university community in that case. So one other quick example in the Panhandle of Texas, a community that has held its own for about thirty years at about twenty-five thousand population. Between the drought, the economy, they lost their largest employer, a meat facility, within the last year, a major blow. So the point being, we work with communities that are growing very quickly, and that's their, their issue. Some that are holding steady and wanting to improve, and then others that are dealing with decline and having to overcome those challenges. This is what we hope to accomplish tonight, just a starting point for our process. I will fill you in about what's coming up over the next roughly one year in this process and some of the timing of that. Tonight is meant to be step back and talk about some of the big picture issues, and very frankly, it's to help us get oriented. We have been doing a lot of listening the last two days in these various sessions with some of your residents, your business owners, property owners, and wanted to hear at this level as well what's on your mind. And this may be tough to see, but I'll walk you through it. Basically, these first couple of months is our early input effort, and council member of the neighborhood workshops are in the September timeframe, as Emily mentioned. We are trying to build on the neighborhood partnership and the zone structure, so going to the various zones through these workshops. And then there'll also be workshops toward the end of the process later in the spring. But basically, getting to a point this fall where we work on the different pieces of the plan, and just to recap, that is your land use and development issues, growth issues, infrastructure, housing neighborhoods, parks and amenities, economic development, so some of the basic building blocks of the community. But then when we get to the spring timeframe and there's an overall draft of the plan documents, we do have a point where we'll come back to a forum like this, joint workshop, and present those highlights to you and really start talking about priorities for the years ahead. That was a common question the last two days of, why do you look out twenty years? We need to be doing some things next week, next year. And that is the point, is let's look down the road, but then let's bring it back to how do you get down that road the way you want to be headed, and things need to accomplish. So that's our starting point tonight. And then if this body is comfortable to proceed, we would go to public hearing and then consideration of plan adoption. So roughly through the early part of next summer, midsummer, getting to that point. So these are some quotes I like to use very quickly, and you'll notice it's a couple of military folks that we're familiar with, but I put these up because this is partly our philosophy at the end of this process. We have to put some things on paper, but it's the process of going through and assessing where you are today, where you've been in recent years, and where you're trying to get to, very much like business planning. What factors are out there that are going to affect your future? Which ones do you control? Which ones do you try to influence? But at the end of the day, especially in today's world, whether it's technology or all these factors, you can put some things on paper, but things just keep moving. But it's to get to a point where there's some agreement on priorities and places to focus. So as I said earlier, this is meant to be big picture tonight. We want to step back from some of the day-to-day and think about where you fit in the region, where you fit in what's happening around the world, literally, and where this community needs to focus as we look ahead to the next several decades. And in some cases, this has come up in our discussions as well, that when you're talking about infrastructure, road improvements, there are things you're doing that last for hundreds of years, literally, and so all levels of investment. But we do want to start back, as we outlined on the agenda. We're not going all the way back to the beginning, but we've recognized the rich history that we're building on here. But going back to the last comprehensive plan, which was in 1999, and this list is really the key items that struck us as at that time, and it's, it's nice to know that we have the same Planning Commission Chairman who worked through that process and is with us again today to work through this update. But if you think back at the time of that plan, Belleville was looking at a projection of growth getting past the fifty thousand mark, and there was the outlook that the south and east parts of the community is where growth would happen, but certainly there would still be focus on the older neighborhoods. Downtown was making that comeback. So this list is very much all those pieces, existing developments, but some of the new growth areas. As I said earlier, we've all been through these recent years of some, some recession that set some things on a slower pace, but the, the key questions I want to ask here, we have a couple of discussion points along the way. This is the first one, is as you think back to that timeframe about 2000, and Liz, if you'll take some notes for us, we just wanted to get a quick laundry list of what you consider some of the major accomplishments in Belleville over these last ten, fifteen years, and we'll just get that up. We've been having the same discussion with the groups the last two days, and just wanted to hear from you as well. Just, and anybody.
New Hollow Hills High School.
Absolutely.
New Hollow Hills.
And in its place, something that's, that's come up in every conversation.
Are you?
Yes.
Seventeen Street.
By the way, I was curious, before Belleville Crossing, was, was that always vacant land? Was there anything there before?
Yeah.
The house before Belleville Crossing was moved.
Behind that, you know.
That's what that is, okay. Thank you.
I think a big accomplishment that we talked about during the ninety-nine, which I was part of as an alderman, is the downtown revitalization.
The other ones we could add is expansion action that did happen to the south and to the east.
Right.
Plum Hill, rest of the orchards, you know, West Haven, all these.
Absolutely.
About a half dozen subdivisions that really kind of expanded pretty quickly in the south.
Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, but first subdivision really that was new in a long time, actually since the orchard started, was Reunion in ninety-nine.
Yep.
And that was the first subdivision. And then, and since that comp plan, we've had more additions in the orchards, Maple Hill, Plum Hill, what's the one you lived in first? Brook Hill.
Brook Hill.
Brook Hill, and we had Autumn Woods.
Sunset Ridge.
Sunset Ridge.
Turtle Creek.
Turtle Creek. And we plotted, I think even a couple of other ones that didn't, didn't get off the ground since the recession. So, but prior to ninety-nine, we had had a subdivision started, Woodridge.
Well, probably Belleville Woodridge.
We doubled Red Woodridge in the last thirteen years. But, but Woodridge and, and the orchards were the last two started, and they were in the eighties. So we were, we were really sluggish on the home build. Who did the home grow?
About fifteen up there, the shop and mall.
Well, and I think also, Jim, tell me if you agree, I think one of the big topics of the ninety-nine plan was that we talked about fifteen being our new front door.
Yes, yes.
And it really has become that.
I think another theme of the plan that struck us is if you want to take care of your established community, you need to grow. You need to generate revenue, to add amenities, to grow and keep that momentum going, so.
Emily, would you or Eric have any good estimation of annexation since the last plan? I know we had, we had nineteen hundred acres with the reunion, that one, with that one annexation, but what would you guess, Eric?
Overall, I'd say maybe three thousand.
So I would, I would agree with you. I think we've annexed about three thousand.
Acres or households.
Three thousand acres since nineteen ninety-nine has been annexed.
Mark, one of the other things you talked about, fifteen as the front door, but really just establishing a major entrance points to the city, and that includes North Illinois Streets.
The sides and the, and the, including up the entranceways.
That's correct. Defining levels.
And we still got some more to go, but we certainly, North Illinois Streets, everybody remember, was not very pretty. And we have a defining point now coming up, West Main Street and, and Route Fifteen. Still got more to do, but those three were accomplished.
The metro link, Kent, we're already underway. They, and all that stuff is pretty well locked in. Emily, right in the eighties. I mean, I know you weren't here, but I think from looking at, when working with metro, I think, but didn't really kick off until, I mean, we didn't get this, the, the train coming to the Belleville station didn't happen until we were aldermen.
I think it was ninety-seven, ninety-eight was the first train ride, so from, from State Street, from Met, from Fifth and Missouri to here.
They're celebrating twenty years of Metro Lake, but I'm not sure exactly.
Yeah, but it didn't really make it work.
It ended, it ended at Fifth and State for a long time.
I'm thinking about Shield Street, College.
That all happened right about the time that this plan was being done. So in, in that plan then, I don't, I don't remember, you guys have reviewed it more, more thoroughly than I have. Did we talk about development at Shield Street at that time?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. Because we were in the process, right, when I, I got on the council, of those engagements, but I couldn't remember.
As you said, excuse me, as you said, Mayor, the fifteen being a front door, but it also talked about the Shield Street Station being a different type of front door for transit coming into the city. We know there are pros and cons to transit, and we've had some of those discussions, but I'll tell you, there's a lot of cities we work with that would love to have a transit connection to a big city, and the fact that it comes straight into your community and across it to a college campus, I think that's a great asset.
Well, it's, we put, man, they had to fight to get that. It wasn't necessarily.
The extension of Frank Scott Parkway really made a impact on the West End of Belleville. It made very, West End of Belleville much more attractive.
Well, during Chairman Kurtz's time, the fact that we took it straight across that fifty-seven hundred instead of looping around there to Fifty-Ninth Street, the way it used to go, that, that whole, that whole concept really improved the, yeah.
One thing that I would add to Liz's art erupt is, because it's less visible, but you've had to keep at it, is infrastructure, wastewater system, especially.
I was just going to say.
There are things that the other levels of government tell you, you need to do, but it's, it was mentioned in our sessions the last few days that it may not be visible, it may not be sexy, but it's, it's getting done.
Well, Paul, it was ninety, it was ninety-seven or something like that night when, when they first came to us, or eighty-eight, actually, but it was, it was in ninety-seven, we finally issued a study at that time on separating the stormwater, et cetera, and trying to get a handle on where we were. And that was really when our eyes were open about the magnitude. But now we're finally engaged in, you know, major sewer work that is mandatory, so.
Two things, Mark, and we talked about Londonwood, Pearson General, and that wasn't really a foreseen issue at the point, but.
It was, it was a, it was a conclusion that we had to do something with Golden West because we knew the high school was moving.
That's correct, but we didn't have, we didn't know what it was going to be. But Swift's expansion was something that we didn't anticipate either. Swift didn't really take it off significantly, and I think I thought we could solve that. But, but the second issue, and I just lost my train of thought, was.
I've been on that train several times today.
Off the train. Well, the crime lab is one of them, but that wasn't the one in my head. I'll build some that.
With, with the new subdivision and all the things we've done, does population increase?
Yeah, Emily, you have, you developed a census. Population, do you know, did you by chance look up, were we forty-two thousand in, in ninety-nine?
Barely stable, it's changed slightly.
I think we were forty thousand in ninety-nine.
I don't remember.
I don't agree.
I think we've come up.
I think the two thousand census was forty-one, four's employees.
Yes.
And, and most reasonable was forty-four.
We were forty-five, five oh three, then the last one bumped us back to forty-four, four seventy-eight, I think it is. So we, we had a, but you know, with a lot of that just reporting, but, but I mean, we, we have, we were right at forty-one thousand when we did this study, so we have seen an increase of about four thousand. Jim?
It came back in my head, but the, the green space and recreational expansions, what you've seen with the Bayside Field Park and a couple other areas.
And the trails.
The trails that expand, you know, from bike trails.
And that was in the discussion, I don't know if you guys saw it, right, but I know it was in the discussion in ninety-nine, that we wanted to, we started talking then already, and then it picked up about trail connections and stuff, because there was already talk when Metro was coming, what some of their plans were going to be.
Yes, and the trail, bike trail was consistently mentioned in our sessions. In the, in the two thousand plan, there was a discussion that when you look at some benchmarks used around the country, that Belleville had some ground to make up as far as acreage relative to population, and to go for large parks versus some smaller, perhaps. I know you're on that path, but that's something that a lot of cities around the country are working towards, and, and it may come up in terms of athletic fields, but some people are just looking for a quiet place to get away, so different types of parks.
Did the ninety-nine study, I don't remember exactly, but did he address there the car dealership situation?
I haven't come across that yet.
Do you know where exactly the thing is? I haven't.
It's in it?
I'm not sure, I'm trying to find it, if you know where it would be.
I don't, I don't know exactly.
I don't think it is.
It was, it was just starting to happen, and it wasn't, if you remember correctly, in ninety, ninety-seven, ninety-eight, shortly after I got on the council, at that time I chaired Economic Development, was when we were notified with no warning that Newbold was leaving, and it seemed like the exodus really started probably right at or right about the time, so we didn't see the full effect, and we might not have had a lot of conversations. But see, we, since this ninety-nine plan, we've only been able to keep three of our car dealerships. At one time Belleville had thirteen, thirteen dealerships, and, and that was why the city fathers at that time didn't really panic when the mall came and we lost our businesses downtown in seventy-two, seventy-three, when they developed St. Clair Square, because we still had thirteen car dealerships. But then Detroit's philosophy of get out to the interstate was another situation where we had to reinvent ourselves again.
Ken, was there anything in terms of industrial park and office park development?
Yes.
Very definitely, expansion.
Yeah, expansion, because they started the first industrial park in eighty-six, I believe, wasn't it, Eric? Which was a part of Tiff Three, but it was part of the reason Tiff Three was created, was, was to get the first phase of the Belleville Industrial Park done. Now, in the last, since this here, we filled two, and this council now has commissioned and, and got three underway. So we, we have continued to, to that, and, and certainly in this plan, we've got to continue to finish the job that we started.
Was there, was there anything about hospital expansion? But we have two major hospitals.
Well, I don't know if, I don't know if, and I don't know if it, I don't know if it addressed expansion, Jim, but I think what it did address was we recognized the importance and, and that they were probably at that time one and two as far as the employer, number one employers in the city. And, and I think we certainly realized it. It wasn't till recently that we ever became concerned about losing one of those hospitals, and that was never even talked about in, in ninety-nine at all, or even until probably two thousand either.
Yeah, and well, that's another thing that we didn't really address, because we didn't know what was going to happen, but St. Elizabeth's has scaled back somewhat, but Memorial's really significantly taken off. I mean, it really got exploited on our campus.
Well, yeah, well, if you go back to ninety-nine, St. Elizabeth's was the senior employer. They had about seventeen, eighteen hundred, maybe pushing two thousand employees. Now it's reversed. I believe St. Elizabeth's is down to about twelve hundred, and Memorial's probably at about eighteen hundred. Don't quote me exactly, I don't know if he's Democrat, but you can check those, but I think it's, it's pretty much reversed from, from that time, fifteen, sixteen years ago.
If I could shift, excuse me, if I could shift gears a little bit, the related question that we have there is things that perhaps you set out to accomplish and haven't gotten there yet, and this is not to dwell on the negative, it's to say there are some things that even when you're updating a plan down the road is still on the agenda. Are there some things that we can list there that we still need to work on that are continuing community issues?
Still the sewers.
Still the sewers. I was going to say, I was going to say that exactly. The sewers are ongoing, and we'll be doing that for the next, probably like to this plan. It's going to be a long. It's gonna be a long. What's that?
South entrance to the city.
Yeah, I think the south entrance to the city is still one that we're working on. 158, now the initiative's coming with the state doing the roundabouts, but we were, help me, Paul, 19, well, about this time, maybe it was 2000, we were actually awarded a grant for 12.5 million for South Illinois Streetscape, but it was never funded. So, we got into, in fact, at that time, after that, we created TIP 8, right, Eric? Because we were anticipating some major work on South Illinois, we created TIP 8 for a number of reasons, but part of it was that money on paper that we never received. But we had plans of developing that, and that had a lot to do with what was at that time talked highly of the Gateway Connector, which was the state of Illinois's plan to connect from I-64 all the way down to the JV Bridge, and come with basically, you know, a bypass, like a 255 coming down from that direction. There was a lot of activity, if you remember some of it, Mr. Schleter. That was a part of that 1,900 acre annexation in 1999, the Richland, Richland TIP. Is that all, TIP 10 now, Eric? And that was a big part of that dream and development. Unfortunately, he never got the dream off. He probably, probably hindsight now, bit off more at one time. Then the housing and the real estate market started going, and then eventually the economy, and it's, it's never developed, but that was all part of that whole plan.
The north, south, I'm sorry, or south cobbler was another one that we talked about randomly.
It was talked about, yeah, they talked about a north-south cobbler. That would never really got out the ground too much.
Development at the MetroLink stations.
What's that?
The development at Memorial and Sheeps.
Yeah, the development of Memorial's MetroLink Station is another one that we talked about but never quite got going. And then certainly, certainly after this plan got going, but not necessarily during the time of the plan, maybe more so in the last nine years, we started verbalizing probably nine years ago, or maybe a little bit more than that, the need for a fourth firehouse, and that became a reality in 2009. And then right after that, we were able to lower our ISO rating to three, which was quite an accomplishment. So, that was another one that we set out to do and finally, finally did.
Just another one I noticed on my list is the 158 outer belt, which is not fully under the city's control, of course, but.
Right, that's what I was talking about, the Gateway Connector, yeah. No, I'm sorry, that's what they call it, 158. I've been still pressing, we had a conversation this morning, I'm still pressing to try to get, even though there's no money, to try to get the state to take that, at least the first phase of it, and get that four lane from 158 and 161 to Route 15. My theory is there, if we can get it to Route 15, then it goes to four lane, then you can go west, you can get to 255. It's not by any means the outer belt that they had envisioned, but for, for a number of years until those funds could ever be possibly considered, if we can just get them to come down, and the thing about it is, what I'm told, the state already owns a significant amount of right-of-way and property from 158 over to, I think they almost own it all to 177. So, half of the, half of the tough part is done, the acquisition, so that would be a good plan.
Was part of that plan okay to really take that outer belt, or whatever you want to call it, and connect it to Frank Scott Parkway as well?
It was, it was, it was talked about at one point, that Frank Scott would come over and catch the outer belt, yes. There was talk about Ross Lane coming from Frank Scott, coming across, being developed over past West Haven School, and then the biggest hurdle was, we had to build a bridge over Richland Creek and connect 15 by Eckert's and Dream Up. That was another thing. That was a, that was really a Jim Rosberg vision that he had, who was the past superintendent of 118. And we had that also, our fire chief at that time, Dave Martinson, always thought that would have been a good connector at that time, before we had the fourth firehouse in that location.
If I may, Mayor, I'd like to move on to the next part of the discussion, and which is turning our attention forward now. But bear with us. But basically, basically turning our attention to the years ahead and.
Can I ask a question while we're?
Yes, sir.
In terms of looking ahead, and I know that we're probably more focused on Bellville than anything else, but is this to have a regional, more regional outlook as well in terms of, for example, we look at Route 15 as being another corridor for development here, but I look at Route 15 and say, it's like, this, in my mind, extends well south of the city towards Creever, and then west down past 255.
And it needs to go all the way to the bridge.
Exactly.
We had this conversation again just recently. Chairman Carter and I have, in just recent conversations again, both spoke of, and we are still advocates to get, we, I just fortunately now have a seat on East West Gateway, and he's been a past chairman and is still on there, I think he might be vice chairman again now. But, but we both have spoke frequently, and we will continue. Route 15, we believe, needs to go all the way to hypothetically, don't quote me exactly, but I'd say the Tudor Avenue exit.
Right.
And it needs to be a link to Missouri.
Well, if you look at 255, I understand that that's the most underutilized highway that we have in the metro area here. So, if we were to take that vision, if you will, down Route 15, past 255, down to Tudor, for example, let's say, the amount of development that could take place there in terms of industrial office park, et cetera, and I believe the office parks would come back on our way, you know, around Frank Scott Parkway, you know, but one of the other things I was, I'm sorry, I'm kind of going off here, but one of the other things I was looking at in terms of, when you had the map slide up there, is it possible, okay, in the future, to maybe put some like colors out there in terms of, what is our possibility for annexation, extension, et cetera? You know, we can see the green, this is where we're here now, but I think it might be helpful, okay, to see, okay, in different color spectrums perhaps, okay, where the opportunities might lie, and what we might be able to expect to take place in that quarter. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Ken, I think one of the things all of us need to be reminded of, and I think for a while, for a short while, I'm not saying a long time, but the plan and the vision that a few of us share about 15 going west of where it's at, Shrine, the levee situation was a big factor, but now that the levees are under repair, and they have a plan, and they have that to be accomplished, what you said is very true. We can get back to where the industrial and some of the trucking, you know, they just did a study at East West Gateway about a transportation study, about the freight, and whether it be by barge or whatever, and the opportunities in this area are immense. But that area now that we talk about, the Mississippi Bottoms, is very, very ripe for picking right there, especially now that we got the levees in vision of getting them repaired.
You know, one of the things that would be valuable, similar to what Ken talked about there, was to overlay the, our FPA or facility planning area over the top of future annexation, because our sewers are an annexation pool, and that's something that we need to look at as an overlay, you know, what, how we can be used, you know, to use that.
And one of the things to keep in mind right away, and we've looked at that, our FPA, for example, goes all the way out to Radio Orange Road. Right now, on 1177, et cetera, that's why our FPA is very, very much well-suited for us if the 158 connector would come down to, and the other thing to keep in mind, this city by, number one, we have no choice, but number two, by, including the sewer CSO mandated repairs, by fixing our much-needed old treatment plant and expanding its capacity, we're probably in the best driver's seat of any community around as far as being able to potentially handle future growth. Some will be told they can't grow because they have no sewer capacity. So, we're gonna be in a, in a, in a good place, even though it's a tough spot right now with all the mandates, but we're gonna be, city councils and our children in the future are gonna be in a much better place to be able to at least have choices. When we got on this council, when I got on this council in 99, we were told then that we couldn't possibly annex anything else because we had no more capacity, and that's how close we were. Like, we did some things, we evaluated some things, we found out we had a little bit more, then we started changing some things, making some adjustments, and now we've expanded the plant greatly to where that's no longer a fear, that's now the reality, is we have sewers.
Is part of the proposal that you'll be making, will that, will that address the various federal, state, local agencies, communities, et cetera, that might be drawn upon to help bring this, you know, to reality? I'm thinking about SWCC, for example, the Southwestern Illinois Development Association, et cetera.
Yes, from the infrastructure discussion to annexation jurisdictions, police response, fire response, all these different factors, parts, but we also heard a common theme in our discussion sessions today and yesterday of partnerships, nonprofit, public-public, public-private. Everybody's got resource issues, so whatever it takes to get to the finish line of where you want to be with different types of projects, absolutely.
And I think, go ahead.
The topic of annexation is interesting, and we're talking about expanding our corridors. What are we doing to make ourselves more attractive to people who live three blocks off of Main Street, to the doughnut hole that's to the town?
Well, I think we have to look at that, but keep in mind, Paul and Holm, some of those we have not approached because it's almost, it's sewer issues that are very difficult. Some are almost impossible without being very expensive for the city or whoever would do it. Johnny's area, Jim's area, where they annexed, the Dutch Hollow area years ago should be seared, it needs it badly, but it's virtually impossible almost to sear that, cost-wise. But there are some little streets on some of these nooks and crannies that people have refused to annex, and they are on septic. We got them just, I can take you to a couple right down the street from here that are just in the county, or you go along Route 13 over near Patarell, or Bell Air Bowl, I'm sorry, Old Havens. But, but my point is, is there's a couple of councils that are still in the county, and they're on, but I understand. I had a man call and kind of get mad at me today because he got a letter from the county that his septic failed, and he now, because he's within 300 feet, the law says, of the city of Bellville sewers, he must get on. Our ordinance says you must annex if you can. If you are, if you are contiguous to get our sewers, you must annex. We had, that's the way we'd set it up a number of years ago. City Council changed that. So, we are gonna, you're gonna see more, because a lot of these septic tanks now are 30 years old, 35 years old, and they're failing. So, we're gonna close some of those doughnut holes, but, but I do think, for the first time in my adult life, we're getting some of the areas that have always kind of prided themselves to stay unincorporated, they're shattered, but some of them now do look at Bellville because of our police and fire protection.
Right, I agree. What can we do to make ourselves more attractive?
I think the one thing you're starting to see, years ago, there was a difference in taxes, primarily school taxes, et cetera, but, but you're starting to see some, that gap's starting to change. So, I think that some of these annexations, quality annexations, and I'm not trying to get specific, but we have some quality subdivisions that are on our, on our, touching, are contiguous to us, both east and west of Bellville, that I think in the, in the next round, we're gonna see some of them annexed, I do believe it. I think they're gonna want to.
I would like to second an earlier point, and again, as a visitor to the area, we took 15 towards St. Louis, assuming if it didn't get us to a bridge, it would get us in the neighborhood. I had no idea I would end up on a local street to find my way there. In other words, coming this direction, absolutely, I think 15 is key, and, and the speed that you could get to your city from the center of the region versus the interstate, 159. And also, we've talked about this in some of our sessions, the stretch of 15, as you get to town, it's like a parkway, a beautiful stretch of road, and.
I complained to the state today about cutting the grass, and they're gonna do it. So, the one other thing I think we all agree, and we have had a conversation here tonight, but I think it's very, very important, is to reiterate the partnership and the ongoing relationship of Scott Air Force Base. And while it was important in the 99 plan, it's equally important to the next plan for the next 20 years. And I think that, you know, we work at that relationship every day, a lot of us work very hard at continuing different efforts, whether it be Bell Scott, or whether it be different things, but, but that's got to be continued in the plan, and we have got to continue to do everything in our power to build and nurture the relationship, because Scott Air Force Base is the economic engine in the region. And, you know, we, I think we do a good job of partnering and reaching out to them, but, but it's imperative that we continue that relationship at the top of our list.
As a mention, let me turn attention now to what's ahead, and this slide, where to focus. At the end of the day, the image at the top is a to-do list. We can make a list of 300 things to do over the next several decades, but we need to talk about what do we do next week, next year, set priorities. I know you can't see it very well, but there's an Hilbert cartoon we like to use that staff usually appreciates, because it says, tell me what I shouldn't be doing, and I can't even see it from here, Liz, but the must-be-done, the ultimate priority, everything can't be top priority, you've gotta do some phasing and what's feasible to get done. So, next slide is, is our compilation, and, okay, we're gonna be, because I can't see it from here, so I'll just figure others can. We made a list, and this is absolutely a working list, a starting point, of some things that are already in our view, rising to the top, and we're hearing through our discussions key issues for the years ahead. And Liz, if you could read down that list, it's in no particular order, and what I'm gonna ask the group to discuss next is, looking at this list, are there things that are more important than what's on that list right now that should be put on the list, and if so, what gets knocked out?
Neighborhood integrity, balance of old and new, for example, infrastructure, historic preservation, and new housing, focus on fundamentals, examples, small businesses, neighborhood streets, image and aesthetics, like perception, vacancy such as infill and reuse, public safety, downtown vitality, strategic corridor planning, growth such as quality jobs, retail and housing, and parks, trails momentum.
Pretty good list.
It's, and it's, it's a list that, as I said, reflects the discussions the last few days. We have certainly covered a lot more ground in those discussions than this list, but we tried to boil it down to some, in some cases, some broad themes, knowing there's a lot of more specifics under those. But let me open up discussion, just as you look at that list, is there something missing that you think needs to be on that list?
Okay. Let me, let me, let me just bring up the West Bellville Streetscape that, I don't know if it got funded, it got funded and it got dropped.
It constantly, it never got funded.
It ended up being to it. You know, my, my main concern with my award is, is, is the streets starting at, at, I guess, 1,000 or 98th Street in East St. Louis coming back on the hill. And I say 98th Street because that's the, that's the sidewalk is in, is in.
Is it 89th Street?
Oh, 89th, excuse me, 89th Street, the sidewalk, the street is in East St. Louis, the sidewalk is in Bellville, and that's right in front of Family Dollar. You know, what is, what is, and I've been focusing on this about 10 years or so, what is happening? You know, we're, we're seeing a deterioration of streets, sidewalks, curbs, where there are curbs, most of those streets down there don't even have curbs, they're just, they're just rock and, you know, what was all the chip base, that's deteriorated away. I've got a couple of streets down there that's only big enough for one building to actually go down in one direction, trash truck actually. go down in one direction, trash truck actually has to back in there down there to get, pick up people's trash. This is my concern. You know, I've seen neighborhoods deteriorate like that. We have, the strange thing about that, about Warren Ford, is we don't have a tip district in Warren Ford, and consequently, we have no money source to actually draw a comprehensive plan to address the streets and to address curbs. Once, once all of that stuff deteriorates, it has a drastic effect on the community itself, all those communities where those streets are going bad. And we're seeing it, you know, we went down, took a trip down there to Ninety-Eighth Street a week ago, my septic oven there, just to, just to look at what had happened. Inside of, I guess, five, six years, we can readily see that there is a cancer. You know, I don't want it to be a thing, well, hey, you know, people from East St. Louis moved in and the city deteriorated. That's, that's, that's not the case. You know, what is happening is we're unable to address the street problems down there as we are with a lot of the other sections in the city, so consequently, it's dying. And this is North West Main, these are all little small, short streets down there that 's down there, that people drive up to now West Main, we never see them, you know, we never see them, we never see the, because there's no reason for you to venture off into those neighborhoods back there. And some of them are only a couple, two or three blocks long. Once you go over and go around Lebanon, go around Bell Hollow, you get into the, to the High Ridge and the Highwood neighborhood subdivisions up there, you're gonna see basically the same effects that's occurred, basically because there is no funding source to actually put together a plan to address a street. If you only address a street every year, one a year, possibly in ten years, we could, we could make it up to, you know, maybe up to Past Rains somewhere up in there, and the old ranch, and get those, get some of those streets and curbs, you know, addressed. And it's a problem, you know.
Johnny brought up a good point about the West side. And what we talked about right now about the entrance to Bellville, nobody tonight has mentioned one-sixty-one, the entrance to Bellville. What plans do we have for developing one-sixty-one? We're right there between two metroing stations. We're gonna build a bike path back there, I understand, but is there any, gonna be an commercial or residential plan for that area? The second thing is, and I'm sure you're familiar with this, is the broken window theory. If you would explain the broken window theory. And that's that West side, when John talks about a cancer, when you talk about not creating, not fixing problems, if you're more familiar, you're a urban planner, the broken window theory came out in New York, and I think Northern California.
Well, even in the street context, some of the comments today were, if the street that I drive on every day is not in good shape, that really hurts my morale for my home, my neighborhood, and also if, what's my desire to improve and invest in my property if the public, if it doesn't work, so we definitely heard that.
I used to, I live over there on that West side, and I used to drive down one-sixty-one for years, go to the prison where I worked, and I had the authority to send out workers, and the mayor's talked to me.
We called you regularly.
Many years, sending out workers, building workers. I no longer work down there, I'm retired, I no longer turn right, head down that way. And I can see, the other day, I went down that way, and I can see the overgrowth, the connections that I had with the Department of Transportation to get a cut, I no longer have those connections. The connections I had with the prison to send inmates out there to pick up the trash, and all over though, Highway fifteen, other places, I no longer have that input, and you can see the deterioration or the absence of care, all the way down one-sixty-one.
I had to, you're a hundred percent right, I had to again this week, send our sanitation crew out when they got done at work, two different days to clean up the entrance ramps at one-fifty-nine by the firehouse, the clover leak looked horrible, and I still check, they gotta be done. Now, years ago, I'd cut them regularly, and they picked up the litter. With the situation our state's in the last couple, three years, they do nothing, they do nothing.
Twice a year.
Twice a year.
One thing I'll add from the discussions, it's the, so taking care of the street itself, but consistently, everybody mentions the downtown streetscape, the banners, and now the banners in front of Lindenhurst, Lindenwood, I'm sorry, and that they'd love to see that extend.
And we, some of them don't realize, we have put banners, maybe not as extensively, we've taken Christmas decorations out to the west end where they used to not be, I'm proud of that. But, no, I think you're right, Joe, we have to include the whole city.
Well, and not just that aspect, but just that, because you have so much corridor, and that's your front door in some ways locally that people see, just the, it goes back to that morale boost of, this looks nice, this is our city.
And see, the idea of the broken window theory, just so everybody understands that it worked in New York and it worked other places, a little consciousness, but the ideal is that if there is a window that's broken, and nobody does anything about it, then the next window to it gets broken, and nobody does anything about it, then the next window gets broken. And then you're gonna have graffiti, and you're gonna have trash, and you'll have a fire, and a building gets gutted, and the sidewalk will buckle, and nobody will fix it, because who cares? Those buildings aren't being taken care of, so the street doesn't get taken care of. That's the broken window theory, you come in and fix that window, the first window that gets broken. Empty factory, doesn't matter, the window gets fixed, somebody, the city puts up a plywood barrier there, and it gets fixed. Another window gets broken, city comes in and fixes it. And what happens is the windows stop getting broken, the community, the people that live in that community start knocking their kids upside the head about breaking windows. The community pitches in with the city to keep that neighborhood, but it's a city that not cares. And, you know, I, in my opinion, the mayor's worked very hard on the West end, very hard, but it doesn't mean that we don't want to be included in this, not really as a plan, because we really, I really believe, I think Johnny really believes, we both came out of East St. Louis, this broken window theory is a viable solution. If you don't care about the street, the residents that live there won't care about you. If you do care, the residents will pitch in and help.
Ken?
Whenever we're looking at, in the future, if I put my futuristic hat on, I would, when I was in college, they came out with Albus Huxley site nineteen-eighty-four, and by that time, all, very few people were working, and almost everybody was, didn't have a job. Well, that didn't quite come true, but I think in twenty years, we're gonna be looking forward to that. We're gonna see more and more people who will be looking, perhaps, perhaps we won't work for it our ways, perhaps the amount of time will be reduced, but I think there will also be a considerable number of people who don't work as often, or probably will be some people who don't work. To my way of thinking, one of the things we really have to look forward to in those days is gonna be recreational activities, not the last one there about parks recreation, but that's true, but whether we're going to be planning for something that's taxpayer-paid, or whether we're gonna be planning something on the county level, or whether we're planning something about attracting businesses, for instance, they have a jump zone out in Chesapeake Valley, it's a full gymnasium-sized building built with trend leagues. It's a wonderful idea, but it's recreational, and I think we're gonna need to look to the future and try to attract recreational activities.
London?
I think you're right, at first it sounded a little bit cynical about people not working, but we're at the, leading into the neighborhoods, we're retiring, and that's just a fact, and there isn't a bigger generation coming behind it.
And it will be acceptable not to have a job.
Absolutely. So, so we need to look at, how does that affect our tax base? What, what does that, what are people wanting, and how do we fulfill them if we're not having the income? But another thing, we talked about the other night, it's not ours, but it's totally about my home, we can't ignore it.
My home certainly, yeah, we haven't ignored it, but it's now going silent, that goes back to our state. I think one of the biggest things we have to talk about in this plan, and it goes back to what Dave Two guys said, we do have a major philosophy and a planning challenge with the financial way we've been doing infrastructure repairs, because our largest TIF that we've had now, in two thousand, in two thousand twenty-one, thirty-five years will have been completed on that TIF three, and that's allowed us to do millions upon millions of infrastructure improvements. It goes away in twenty-one, before this plan will be phased out. And, and I know the forefathers years ago, there was opposition to tiffing Warren Ford, so they didn't do it, they jumped, they shied away from the opposition. But that's one of the reasons they're correct, their streets have not had the dollars because of the cuts in general fund spending, and the cuts in motor fuel from the state, and the cuts in CDBG from the federal government, and we've not been able to do repairs in areas that are not in a TIF. But when TIF three goes away, one of the things that we're going to accomplish anywhere, any minutely near where we've accomplished the last fifteen years, there's gonna have to be some substantial plans. I mean, when we had serious heartfelt conversation here about extending a quarter percent sales tax, we, there's been no thought given to what it's gonna take to keep this kind of infrastructure repairs up that the city, and while it's not fast enough, and I admit it, but we have repaired a lot of streets in the last fifteen years. I mean, we've worked around almost every school neighborhood, we've gotten Frank Scott Parkway, we worked with the county, Seventeen Street, the streetscape, there's, but there's so much more to do. When you look at our doors, you look at Central Avenue, Lebanon Avenue, you look at a lot of these streets that are coming into the city that need, need vision, need repair, need planning. Maschula Avenue's on the, on the checklist now, but, I mean, there's a lot of them, there's a ton of them, and we always try to prioritize based on traffic count and safety issues, et cetera. But I really worry about where the repairs are gonna come from, and how this city's gonna grapple with changing a levy or something, when we fussed over a quarter percent sales tax that we've had for eighteen months in place, that really is a concern, because infrastructure, infrastructure is a major, you know, people, I think if they're gonna reinvest in their households and in their neighborhoods, we've gotta keep fixing streets.
Mayor and Chairman Kurtz had some thoughts.
You know, you guys had a great point for, you know, the housing and the, but we'll move on to another subject similar to that. I think we got some very large campuses that need to be, I didn't say we really can talk about their, number one, our higher education, you know, we really need to focus on some planned areas there, because there's an opportunity, I think obviously Swip has got a great opportunity with commercial development, but Lindenwood, I mean, there's some great opportunities, really super opportunities for expansion along Main Street, and so if you can start looking at some sub-plan areas around the high red, I didn't want to call them districts, I guess, for lack of better words, campuses in places like, again, Memorial, Bell Valley, industrial parks. I think some places in the top ten, those are all important things we have up there, but somebody we need to focus on, I guess we would call it the larger campuses slash employers of the city.
I agree, and one that we, one that this council made a commitment to, and I know recently, unfortunately, they did a layoff of a few people, but we have a commitment, if also on our campus goes to build another building with the annexation of twenty acres we did a few years ago, we have a commitment to try to make improvements to that small stretch of town all road, and that needs to be kept on our planning horizon because we've made that commitment. And I think it's very important that we honor commitments that, whether I was on this council or not, or whoever, it's important that when they come, possibilities come due, that we honor them. Ken?
Thank you, Paul. To Jim's point, and I agree with him, but I was like, were you thinking about expanding that, not just to the campuses that exist, okay, but towards, when I take a look at what is an economic engine, economic engine is one that creates jobs. And jobs, okay, give people, you know, their salaries, okay, and those salaries go to, you know, spending, and that generates tax revenue, whether it be sales tax revenue, people moving in, building homes, property tax revenue, et cetera. So, I think that, you know, if I was going to think about what I would focus on is that how do we generate more jobs, more jobs, okay, that are going to pay living wages, instead of these service jobs that people get into to maybe learn some skills about working in the community, and that's...
Exactly, I was basically with that, what I was...
Good conversation. Yes, sir.
The main city, is that residential, commercial, or both?
All, all the above.
The empty storefronts along West Main and other streets, it has to be there.
But infilling neighborhoods is important also.
Absolutely. We, we know that, if you go back eight years ago, we had a lot of empty storefronts downtown. We know that with attention and partnerships, working with Main Street, the Chamber, the business owners that was there, that has greatly turned around. I mean, I think we all would agree, an awful lot of voids have filled. We, we know as you drive up West Main Street, there's a lot of vacancies. We also know that the recent downturn of the economy was a factor, but we also know, yeah, because we also know that in the neighborhoods, that we had, we've seen and continue to experience more foreclosures than we've ever gotten notice of in this city, probably in its history. So, we're hopefully coming out of some of that, but we've certainly experienced some pretty bad economic crunches, and we're gonna have to work at the infill, we are. And the infill, wherever you call it, those projects are extremely important. I see that Bellview Park Plaza and Wade Square have gotta be some of our priorities for this old nineteen fifty-six, the year I was born, development that need major overhauls. And we've got to get in there and try to, but once again, without TIF, I don't know what the tool is, and that's why I beg this council to take a serious look at, you know, we may have to develop a TIF in an area to try to save it. We've got, we're gonna have to really seriously look, because it's gonna take some dollars to get somebody willing to invest in an area that's really becoming blighted, and we got a couple right there, not to pick on them, but they, they need a lift. And, and, you know, and I think some innovation and some aggressive thinking right now could really help us turn a couple of those spots around. What, Danny?
One of the small business owners that was in one of the focus groups that I was in yesterday, he mentioned something about if, also taking up you Plaza, for example, is there a way that the city could freeze the taxes on an area, say, okay, this semi- quiet area or whatever, the taxes are X amount of dollars right now, and if somebody buys a property, invests, even if they tear a building down and build a new building, you hold taxes at the existing rate for ten years or fifteen years or whatever, just to, so somebody knows they can move into an old area, improve it dramatically, and have low taxes for that period. And again, it was a business owner that said that.
It would be a rebate that what could be done through a TIF, but I think, and we've done, I'm not saying exactly that we've done some of that, and I think, you know, I think that theory, we've, I think it's gonna take some creative thinking, and I do think it's gonna take, it's not a cheap answer here, but I think we're gonna have to look at things on a case-by-case fist-to-face basis. Different neighborhoods are gonna require different thinking.
And I would say something like that could even work in, like, residential or something, if you have area where it's, you know, semi-quiet area.
And we've had conversations about trying to make some, some encouragement to the historic areas, whether to, you know, historic homes take a lot of money to agree on, they're very expensive, however, when they're done, they're a very major asset to the community. I mean, I would love, I mean, Bob and I and Paul had a talk the other day, I'm not opposed to trying to extend a TIF into a couple of the historic areas because the infrastructure, the streets and sidewalks, and we know if you go to replace them, should be brick, should be the limestone or limestone paved curbs or whatever, but the cost is unbelievable. So, what unfortunately the city has tended to do in other cities is to shy away and do nothing. But that's not encouraging people to come in, now you go over on Avon Street right now, we were, I think, all amazed at how many empty homes that we actually had over there. So, you know, it probably will shock some people, and probably, I'll probably be cartooned and editorialized for even dare to talk about it, but I think we need to consider it. But I think we need to consider seriously extending maybe TIF seventeen into a couple of those streets that we might be able to reach out. And, 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 you know, the first historic district, if any of us really look back in the seventies when it was created, those houses over there were drug-infested apartments that were a mess. And they took it back to history, brought it back to single family. And, and that, that Avon Street area, I remember in the early seventies making ambulance calls there on a weekly basis, picking up overdoses. It was a regular deal. And, and it's changed. And they, but people, people are not going to invest large amounts of money in those homes if the infrastructure isn't approached, it isn't, isn't addressed. That's my opinion.
Mayor, as I mentioned, this is a working list that we like to use. There will be a much longer list as we work through this process, but we want to keep that focus on, at the end of the day, what rises to the top and what do you need to address in the near term, not just this twenty-year outlook. Liz, if we could go to the next item, a final question we wanted to put before you tonight. And Mayor, I was hoping that we might do a circuit in the room, but ask everyone to stay brief with answers, but of everything we've talked about, what's at the top of your list? What is your personal upper priority in the years ahead for this community as we work on this planning? So, and I hope we conclude the commission as well.
Sure. I mean, my name is Stormy. That's a, that's a big, that's a big question. Whoever wants to dare to go first.
I'll, I'll start. As I said in the focus group we were in yesterday, I truly believe that if the city doesn't take care of the streets, the people aren't going to take care of the property. I think the, I can drive through, you know, I can think of some places where we have put in new streets, even driving down downtown Bellevue, we've got some buildings that really aren't that attractive. But when you drive through downtown Bellevue with the streetscape and everything, you feel really good about it. You drive down any of the streets that have been repaid, new curbs, or just new asphalt, and you don't notice the properties, or you notice people starting to take care of it. So I really believe for a city to, to grow in quality or whatever, the city has to take care of the streets and the infrastructure that the people see daily as they drive down. And I think a lot of homes will take care of themselves. An example I give, on the street that I went on when we moved there twenty-five years ago, you know, it was all older, people retired, the, the houses had really gone to sleep. And we moved in and we fixed up, put in a new star north of the audience off the house and brightened it up. And literally, we just watched it go down the street. And, and I think that happens when streets are repaved. And whether the city comes up with a plan to just have a crew that does nothing but overlay asphalt on streets constantly, anytime the sun's up, I just think that that would do a lot to, to help the city as far as being attractive.
Right. That works into the housing issue.
It works, it does. I, I don't disagree with you. I'm, I'm up for it. It's just, it's money here.
It's already paid for, yeah.
Yeah, I know.
So I guess I'm just saying before you even, you know, I think the parts, everything is wonderful, but unless the front doors are driving in or driving through, unless it's, looks nice, it's hard to get everybody to, just like you said, pick up the trash and everything else. But if the street's attractive, it generally doesn't get the trash, just like you were talking about the broken window theory. I think it all plays into it. And, you know, listening to Johnny talk, you know, I'm like, you know, maybe, maybe we need to go down to his ward all the way down to one fifty-seven, and that's where the next streetscape should be. Because if, if you can make that look as attractive as downtown, I think it stops.
No, and I'm not, I'm not slapping here, but that was one of the things we talked about with buying some things and cleaning up the entrance and making green space.
Sure.
There's a purpose to the thinking. There really is.
Where are people going to come to? If we want people to come to Bellevue and live in our housing and shop here, go to school and make this community better, where are they going to come from? Most of them, we are so close to Missouri, and if we can attract them from that west end, if they can get to us on the west end, we have Bucuh Housing, we have good schools, New High School out there, Outdoors on that side. And if they would come, they will spend their money here. They, they probably are going to come from Missouri. But when they come from Missouri, what are they seeing? Highway fifteen, West Main, and one sixty-one. And those are places we have to, to, to boost up. And unfortunately, or unfortunately, wherever you look at it, those are wards four and eight. And we have to look at those wards. We're not going to draw people from Freeburg, I'm going to say that, Smith, that they're not moving in here.
Unfortunately, those people fifteen, twenty years ago moved to more, you know, moved out.
That one.
And, and there's only a few handful, there's a few coming back, but not, not large numbers. Gil, Joe, Gil, Joe and Jim.
Back to, to the, the street issue, which yes, we have to approve. But I'm going to leave it to you guys as the experts, how you can focus this all in. But the, the young lady sitting back there from, from the V and D during the last election, she knocked on fifty doors. And the number one issue is public safety. Now, if we don't find a way to bring public safety into this equation, then you can fix all the streets you want, you're not going to get the people to want to come in. So we're going to have to focus on that first and, and bring that in. We're going to have to also, we had the, the last one, Parks and, and that too, you need to add Parks. We, we got to look at a community of our size, larger cities south of Springfield. And I think that the issues that we must address, we, we have to have a public pool. And not only a public pool, but we need to modernize ourselves to attract people that want to come into our community. So it's not just building another pool. We have to have the best water park in, in this whole area to compete against the Collins Bills, the God trees, and those type of things. And, and, and focus, as, as was said earlier, on, on Route fifteen, with, with that area out there, it, it is where rope is. And you, you, you may not get people from Freeburg to, to move back in here, but I guarantee you're going to get people from Freeburg and Millstadt to come here to some form of attraction like that. That type of attraction then also gives us the ability, because I didn't hear anywhere in this whole conversation tonight, we got to find a way to get proper hotels in this city. So people just don't go to the fair heights, they, they're going, they're, they're coming about. And these are the types of things. We got to find ways to bring people into this community.
I'll just mention, it's not specifically on the list, but hotel was mentioned in every session.
Have you ever, excuse me, have you heard the theory about when a theater is built, a multiplex theater, and restaurants come? And when restaurants come, hotels come?
I'm going to use Jim's side. I'm going to use Jim then, we'll go back to Jim. Jim, go ahead. You've done a lot of studying on this.
I have done a lot of studying on this. We're looking at this. All this stuff that's being mentioned right now is very connected. Even the broken window syndrome is very connected. You stop just short of, is very directly connected to crime. When the broken window syndrome is followed through and you, and people, and it doesn't just apply to the things the government are in charge of, the streets and things like that. It also applies to homes, businesses, anything that, that where there's rundown, affects the way people see that area. Crime occurs in areas where there are more broken windows. You referred to New York subway system, when they took the graffiti off the subway system, within a few years, crime dropped seventy-five percent. It's a huge number. And it was directly, there was two things they did, the fair beaters, one after the little things, and changing the graffiti. What Joe is saying over there is also correct. You can't just focus on one or two, my, I guess my suggestion would be, don't be too narrow in our focus. Because if you focus just on public safety, you focus just on infrastructure, but you don't do the things like the pool, and the parks, following the broken window syndrome too, by the way, people will make judgments about your city. The key is to create a community that people want to come and live in. You don't want to just do things and keep the people here. It won't be enough. You got to do the things that draw people into your community, and that's the quality of lifestyle. But it's got to be a safe community, of course. But that broken window syndrome, this is all connected. And you're right, a motel won't come unless there's a theater, they, they affect each other. Things like, Lindenwood's talked about baseball complex, that draws teams, which draws motels. Restaurants, they, they watch each other. That's the stuff.
Jim's the expert. We're closer to motel, closer. Biggest thing right now is getting the lenders to start to come back to lend money to the hospitality industry. I've got two who are talking to us. But the biggest thing they can't do right now is they can't get the loans until the, the banks start to let up on the hospitality. The hospitality interest is, is, is the one area that still hasn't, hasn't eased up on.
I, I think there's, there's two things that, that I want to talk about. One is focus on an area generally, and I, I want to call it commercial slash retail. They're the hub that starts from the basement Seventeen Street down to, say, Frank Scott, Frank Scott Parkway, and just a little bit, you know, fully driven homes. And you have that cross-section of North Belt West and Main Streets. That quarter through that area, in, in particular, what used to be, by stroke, sort of, you know, Bellevue Park Plaza. The improvements that need or should be occurring there in order to bring better businesses in, I think we've kind of got to start with Bellevue. I think what you're, you see in some of the communities, and I travel all over with my business, all across the U.S., and what you see is some of the places, if they, some of these older commercial structures, they have to be pulled down to build something new in order to make them more attractive. But there's a, a focus in that, I would have called that, oh, it's an X area, you know, that cross-section of our city, because that's almost like another city itself, so to speak. It's a subsection of our city and a very important hub right there. And a lot of people drive through that area to get to Memorial Hospital, you know, to get to Swansea, you know, it's a really important cross. But along with that is, the second part of that is what I kind of talked about before. But I think more of a comprehensive approach to when we build or allow new commercial developments to come in, or even existing ones to be rehabilitated, that there needs to be a little bit of better focus on just throwing something up and saying, we're new business. I think more of an aesthetics, you know, what do we kind of expect? And it, it goes more towards zoning requirement of, you know, when they, some of these new businesses, we got to, you know, see some green space and, you know, some room plans for, you know, the parking lots. You know, when you go, for example, to Bellevue Park Plaza, very unattractive. There's no trees in that parking lot. There's, you know, it's very dated. And, and unless we can update those areas and make them more appealing when they do develop those, nobody's going to shop there. It's going to, it's going to look the same as it did before.
Look at the fight we had, folks, a couple of years ago, we couldn't get the state to pay North Belt West. It was horrible. And, and we finally got them to do it. We crapped it up, but they took the four million they promised us for Seventeen Street to do it. But getting that belt line paved did really, I think, it didn't fix all the problems, but I think it really, I think we were on the verge of really seeing deterioration and giving up on the belt line before they paved it. There's a lot of, lot, lot of hope was breathed back in, and that just goes back to the asphalt.
For example, for example, me, just real quick to touch on what you're talking about. Shop and Say, for example, if you would take the Shop and Say that's on North Belt, it's a nice looking, attractive building, but it doesn't have any landscaping and there's no curb appeal to it. So if you, if you just add a little green space and planting and put those back into our zoning requirements, update those to what, what we really need to help our economic vibrators. You know, I think you're going to see some of those other things follow, you know, and permanent people.
Paul, did you have a hand up for one?
I need to go first.
Was it?
He got it.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. I'll let you do it. We're not...
I work in that location, the employment office, unemployment office. And there are many days that those merchants don't see a cash customer. So no one's brought it up, and I hate to be the one, but our poverty ratio's too high here. You want a swimming pool? You want a water park? If, if someone is going to develop, the first thing they look at is, what's your median income here? And forty-eight-five for a household. You know, and let them read comments in the paper, and whoever those people are, could you shut them up, because I have people literally moving here, retired people, and they said, oh my God, what is wrong with those people? They didn't want to move. Because people trash talk this city. But until you generate decent income, and Edwardsville's double family income. So where is a developer going to come? It's not like we can just wish we had a hotel, or wish we had a pool, or a water park. What we have to do is be friendly to small businesses, like my buddy Don at the bakery. I did way too much of his stuff. You know, all of us, do we support our local businesses? The little guy, he's not going to move. He's invested his whole life. And then every time there's a, by the way, I love to pay taxes. It's an honor and it's a privilege, and it is my patriotic duty to pay taxes. I want to leave something behind, and I can't do that. You know, when I drive over a bridge, you know, Lewis Black, the comedian, he's talking about, you drive over a bridge, what do you think about the volunteers with a little toolkit built that bridge? It takes taxes. So please, if you're one of these people that thinks taxes are evil, think about it. And as long as our, you know, family income is below fifty, you're dreaming if you think you're going to get these big grandiose projects. But we can build that up by supporting our city. It's a beautiful city. It was built by very brutal merchants. And we're going to, you know, just like, I brought this up earlier, but just like the Bosnian influence, which isn't perfect. But you take immigrants who come here with nothing, like my grandparents and many of yours. They built the city one little brick at a time. And that's what we have in our hands, each of us. And so I hope we can take that away with us and be nicer in the newspaper, please.
Hold on a minute.
Oh, yes. It's like, I have to agree with you. So then you fix something, but the next person's going to do it. It's like the old days when one of the neighbors, oh, they got a new apartment. We got to get it better. But I'm talking about fixing houses, fixing property. If we had a kindness, our, even if we gave them one year's freeze on their taxes, look at West Main Cafe. Have any of us been asked for, have they came and asked any of us for any help? Have you seen how that building is being turned around on the outside? That is really good. But now, maybe if, when they get done, we can say, give them some kind of credit or acknowledgement for the rest of the west end businesses. Look what they did. We appreciate it. And that's the same way with houses, like in my neighborhood. It's an older home, all older homes. They were built during the war. And one side of the street's all two-bedroom, the other's all three-bedroom. But gradually, since I moved in there, they are all starting to fix up. Yards are starting to be taken care of. And someone made a comment about the flowers I have at the corner. Well, another person made a comment, I thought I was in a different type of subdivision. You don't see landscaping, flowers, whatever you want to call it, at the corner when you come in on a street. It gives a little bit of self-pride in that. And I think that's what we got to do with people in the residential areas and the business. Like he said, there's nothing in the parkhouse. That's, just a little bit of sprucing up goes a long way, and it will make the people want to look and say, oh, they did that. I can do this. I can make mine better. That's the attitude we got to give the people to do, to want, to try to improve and try to be better than the next one.
Any other council members or, or business members?
When we just talked about things we want to see, I want to see the six twenty-eighth street area.
And that's really on our goals.
And it's one of the goals.
And we got, we got a grant, we got, really, it's on our vision too. That's supposed to be the extension next and work towards Lindenwood, so that certainly has to be a part of the plan.
And I want to see that house on eleven ten street. I mean...
That, that whole area, I think, is certainly in the, in the vision.
But I'd like to see a recreation. I mean, I'd like to see a pool, a lake center. But I was also thinking that, depending on where we put it, I heard people say it might be on fifteen. That might be difficult for a lot of residents to, like, have the kids go up on a summer, you know, day. To have maybe some other smaller type things. And maybe we can adapt part of like the existing park or Bellevue Park.
Swansea, have one of those, where just the water shoots up out the air, so kids can just run around.
I was just looking at some pictures recently of Chicago, down by the Lining Park, okay? There's an area, and most of that, quote-unquote, park... There's an area, and most of that quote-unquote park is paved, but they've got sculptures and whatnot. There's an area where, um, I guess they do this when it's hot. I don't know if they do it on a regular basis, but they have, um, not fire hydrants, but something like that, where they just pop them open. And they have like, uh, maybe, you know, maybe two inches of water where kids and people can roll their pants legs up and splash around. I was just thinking though, um, you know, kids, something like that in a neighborhood where kids would have something.
True.
I mean, we don't have as many playgrounds in, I think, all over town.
Well, one of, one of the things I'd love to see is bring back, I'd love to see us bring back parks and rec to every schoolyard in the summer, like when I was a kid here. And, and I, and I think it would be very good. Mr. Brown, I'm gonna do something I can't believe I'm doing, but if you're not gonna be negative and sarcastic, you can have another turn. I know, I know. He did, she did.
Uh, the, um, national average for union labor in the country is less than ten percent, more like seven percent. The people that work for the city, sixty-eight percent of them are union workers. Virtually every private, the city does, has to be done by union labor. Here's something that would really help the city. Allow business owners and people who lease up property to do their own work. Instead of having people that are on neuralist, that cost multiple times what an owner can do with himself. Give you an example. I got a piece of commercial property. I had to hire an electrician on a lift to get the permit, get it inspected, pass inspection. Cost me four thousand dollars to get two, uh, fourteen by sixteen foot rooms rewired. I could've done it for under four hundred dollars. That would've left me thirty-six hundred dollars to do other abilities. I was not allowed to do that. I would have no problem, had gotten a electrical permit and passed inspection, which takes care of the safety issue. Why not let business owners, most business owners are cheap cook and bottle washers. I was not allowed, when I had my business on South Illinois Street, to even change a light switch or electrical outlet. I had to hire someone on the list. I got a bid to change an electrical outlet, it was a hundred and thirteen dollars. A service call and then change one outlet. Now, obviously, I didn't do that. But what I'm saying is, there's a lot of entrepreneurs, and there's a lot of rental property, that, that landlords, if they could work on their own property and do their own work and get a permit and pass inspection, you'd have some of these properties that you're always talking about. You, it's more cost effective. They can do more with a building with less money. And I, I, you know, I can do, I have rental property in Suda, I have rental property in O'Fallon, Fairview. I have property in Shiloh. I get to do all my own work. I, I, you know, there's two places I can't do work in, in St. Clair County. But although in East St. Louis, because you're only allowed to use certain people. I think that has to be changed. You can protect people, you know, union jobs, I do that, okay?
Anybody else in the council, just?
I appreciate the remarks about our average income in our, in our households in Belleville. But even people in poverty have to make a face at me. They have to buy food, they have to buy clothing. And, and they're people. They just assume doing it is someplace attractive and safe than someplace that's not.
I understand.
I'd like to see us, um, expand our facade improvement program. Bellevue Park Plaza, I don't think we're gonna be raised if we just make it more attractive on the outside. I don't necessarily want to make more ordinances requiring people who put in parking lots that you have to put in landscaping. But we could do something to encourage them to do that. There's been many, many hours of my child that go on the park lot at Bellevue Park Plaza because people, they just, and their kids, they go, I go, wait, shut up, what's the problem? But I think there are things we can do that wouldn't necessarily cost us money, but that would increase our attractiveness to other people.
My last thought here. I'd like to, uh, some of this council to, uh, think about, consider a tip for, for one, for, not, not just for residential, not just for infrastructure, but for the, um, economic development of, uh, places like, uh, twenty-dollar shoe store that's been sitting there empty forever. You know, uh, those, those buildings are not gonna go anywhere. The recent rains came from down there was because there's, you know, the neighborhoods are deteriorating. And there's nobody down there. As that lady said, the media mention, I'm a, those people down there is zip. And, and, and unless we fortify that community, get those streets fixed so people can start fixing their houses, get some pride, we're gonna lose that. I'm not telling you, you know, I've seen this before. I've seen this scenario happen before. And, you know, as I say, give, give us ten years. Uh, we don't, we don't have to be like, two, three, you know. Give us, give us ten years. We can do a lot in ten years, uh, with, with, with tip out there, uh, on that end. That, and, and I know it's not a lot of economic development out there that really, you know, don't bring the city a lot of money, but, uh, just the, just the people aspect. You know, the homes, those, uh, I think just fixing the, fixing the neighborhoods would bring a lot more, uh, tax revenue into the city. It would help places like Rob's, uh, Morris Hills. Uh, it was give these, give these, uh, 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 apartment owners, that, that guy, he needs help. You know, I mean, I, I went down there. He's, he's trying, you know, but he doesn't have anything to, uh, to, uh, 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 raise the, uh, the level of, uh, I guess, tenant expectancy in the, in the buildings. He's gonna get what he's gonna get because of the building itself. The thing is, I guess he's eighty years old or something, so consequently, he needs help. The only way we're gonna do that is, and that's for anybody, if he bucks up and sells that to somebody, they're, they're gonna need help. They're gonna need help in getting those buildings straight. Just consider that. Consider that. We, we, we need to, we need to consider that.
Lot of good dialogue. I think we'll try to wrap it up.
Quick question on that. Does that include one seven, that's all, or?
Yes, it does.
So how do we go about trying to do that?
Well, these conversations would need to go back into committee, such as economic development. And I think, I think you have to keep in mind, and I don't disagree with the conversation at all, but I don't think you want to necessarily set out to tip the whole ward. I think you gotta, you gotta have some specifics. But, because even, you understand, the tip has to still qualify with all the checks and balances and points. But, but, you know, I think the conversation going to economic development, um, is, is, is a vital conversation, just like some other areas. You know, I think over where we talked about, uh, along Mountain Street or over to Garnfield, I, I think that's a viable conversation. And, and we shouldn't just turn our heads up because it's got the words visuals, T I F. I think we gotta, we gotta consider, look at it. Now, if somebody's got a better means, I said this to the paper for the last nine years, almost nine years come December since I've been back. If you've got some ideas on how to do some of these projects other than using tip, please share them with me. It just happens to be the tool that we've had that has worked for Belleville. Not in the enterprise zone, but we're seeing those rules changed too now. And we're gonna be faced with some changes in the enterprise zone rules. We've seen business, you know, uh, I was really, one night last week, or two weeks ago, whenever, we had the meeting in here about sales tax. And, and, and the Eckers tip came up again, and it was talked down about how the person didn't like their tip dollars going to Eckers. I don't know how many times I can tell you folks that that is a downright online. The, the misconception about some of these tips and, and what is not true is really what's hurting any reasonable discussion amongst people because they've got too many false facts. You know, Eckers, that one dime of any of our tip money goes to Eckers. You don't give Eckers anything unless you choose to shop there. And that's the same for Walmart, Target, those two shopping centers, it's the same thing. We didn't give them a dime upfront, and we didn't give them any of tip, any of our tip money in tip three or any tip. They only get their money if they pay their tax bills timely to the county and apply for the rebate that we promised them. And they only get the one percent business district tax if you choose to shop there. And we continue in the newspaper, in the editorials, and on this council to beep that concept up about we gave Walmart, you know, we never gave Walmart anything. They don't get their money until they prove to us that they've been selling and the one percent business district tax is being reversed, or they pay their taxes. And that property, believe me, the property tax Walmart pays is one hell of a lot more property tax than what they paid when it was farm land. And that's just the facts. But it gets just started, and people then sit back and have fears about this. We can never move this city farward if we don't quit preaching and allowing misinformation and fear to dominate this, 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 the city's agenda. We've gotta get away from the fear. Emily, you wanna have a closing comment?
My final thought, I don't know about the guy who said we'd be done by eight-thirty, but I think we did pretty good.
Did pretty good.
Did we give you what you wanted?
Absolutely, absolutely. I, I appreciate that we could just put a few questions on the table and then step back and listen to this level of dialogue. Very helpful to us. And I can tell you, the, the seven groups we met with over the last two days, we've earned the good, the bad, and the ugly at the end of the year. And, uh, but there is so much going for this community. And, uh, so we've got some work to do now. This was the first pass. It's a full season.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I, uh, I, I wanna say again, thank you. I don't have any other business tonight. There's nothing else on this agenda. I would ask for a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, Aldrich Snyder, to second by Alderman Coletti, who's already on our chairs. All in favor, signify by saying aye.